I call the meeting of Cleveland Heights University Heights City School and District Board of Education to order. Mr. Gainor, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cobal, here. Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Peppler?
Here.
Mr. Register?
Here.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes from the special board meeting of September 17, 2013.
Don't move. Second?
Any discussion, changes, modifications? Mr. Gainor, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cobal? Yes. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
That gets us to awards and recognitions, and I want to turn over the awards and recognition initially to Dr. Celacote, Assistant Superintendent, to recognize our sports team. Teams.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Register. I'm glad that I'm here this evening with some -- we get to open with some great news and some positive remarks and some great students in front of us. So I will head to the podium, and we'll continue from there. We will begin our recognitions tonight by showcasing many of our wonderful student athletes who performed tremendously this fall season. Because we have -- we thought we might have more athletes than -- we weren't sure how many would show, because the football team, as we know, is rather large. But it looks like we were able to accommodate everyone. So if I could, we're going to start with the Heights High School's boys soccer team. So if you could just come forward, so we can all see you, and then I'll continue, once we get settled. Very good. We want a good look at you. Okay.
Now, get the coach to the center.
The boys' soccer head coach, Sean Sullivan, who is here with us, and the Heights High Boys Soccer Team went 12-6 this season. They were undefeated in the Lake Erie League for the second year in a row, winning the LEL championship outright once again. The boys' soccer team received many accolades this season, including Xander Perlman was named Second Team All-Greater Cleveland and Lake Erie League Co-Player of the Year. Desi Pellegrini, Eric Jackson, and Kevin Lissamore, and Ashton Bernard all received Greater Cleveland Honorable Mentions. And five players were named to the All-Lake Erie Team this season, again was Desi Pellegrini, Jordan Swaim Fox, Kevin Lissamore, and Eric Jackson. So if I called your name, do you want to give a little wave? Any of you present? Don't be shy. It's your big time. Shine. Okay, very good. Coach Sullivan received the Coach of the Year Award for the Lake Erie League for the second consecutive year in a row, so if we can give him a round of applause. So we'd like to congratulate all of our young men here. So, great job, and we look forward to another great season next year. At this time, we'd like to take a photo. Mr. Shaker will assist.
Some go up on top.
Congratulations.
Gentlemen, we know we have a long night ahead, so if you have homework or other things you need to do, please do not feel as though you need to stay. Congratulations, Coach. So now would be the time, if you want to exit. We're giving you the out. So, there you go. Take it. There you go. Okay, gentlemen. Good job. Congratulations. 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 That's when you just take it and go, right? You gave them out. All right. Now, we'd like to bring in the Heights High Girls Soccer Team. So do we have some players here?
We got Elise.
All right. Okay. Way to represent. Very good. Hello.
All of our players have practiced and studied for a bio test, so this is what we have. She's under reserve. Come back, man.
Very good. Well, if I could say a few remarks. We'd like to recognize the girls' soccer head coach, Robbie Helfgut, and the Heights High Girls Soccer Team tonight. The girls' soccer team went 10-8 this season, and they were Lake Erie League Champions for the second straight season and sectional champions for the third time in five seasons. Our team made it to the district semifinals falling to mentor, but they were the eventual district champion, so understood. You had some competition. You have represented our district so well and have made us so proud. Thank you for coming tonight, so we can recognize your talents on the soccer field. And we'd like you to keep smiling, because we are going to take a photo of you, so.
You have a lineup lens on there?
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Finally, we'd like to recognize our Heights High Football Team. Might have to go to the second row. Second row? You look very sharp.
Good turnout.
You can stay here, that's fine. Either way. Yeah, sure. There you go. Sure. Okay, we'll take a good look at all of you while I read a few remarks. Our head football coach, Jeff Rotzky, is here this evening, and his assistant coaches and the Heights High Football Team had a historic year, as we all know, that was led by a group of incredible seniors. And the team won 10 games for the first time in school history, had their first playoff win in school history, and made this year their second LEL championship. We can actually clap for that. That's pretty impressive. We have more applause, as Coach Jeff Rotzky was named Lake Erie League Coach of the Year, and Marcus Bagley was named Lake Erie League Player of the Year, and he was unable to be there. Hopefully, many of our students will head to college with scholarships. The team earned the highest collective GPA in the first quarter, and Coach Rotzky expects that that will continue to improve, so that's also an excellent accomplishment. These boys have exhibited terrific sportsmanship, both on and off the field. Jeff Rotzky and his coaches are already gearing up for next season, and we look forward to being at the games to watch them. So congratulations once again, and we'd like to take a photo. You got it? Okay, so out here? Okay, very good. So we would want them out here, I'm assuming? Okay. Congratulations. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here. Congratulations. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Thank you. Good job.
No, no, no. I don't want to deal with it.
At this time, I'd like to turn the rest of the evening's recognitions over to Mr. Register. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Celacote. Next, we want to recognize the tremendous work that was done in passing our bond issue, $134.8 million bond issue. And we do appreciate all our voters and everybody in our community, but we also want to play special recognition to those who really were working behind the scenes, and sometimes you saw them, sometimes you didn't. But it was amazing, from our standpoint, to have gotten 59% of the vote in favor of the bond issue. That, as far as I know, that's unheard of. Certainly, for us, it's unheard of. First, I'd like to thank -- and as we know, this is going to definitely be -- the way we're thinking about it, this is going to carry us through the next 50 years in terms of how the money will be used and what we'll do as far as our buildings are concerned. First of all, I want to thank some district people. Certainly, Dr. McDaniel stepped in. She won't be -- she's not able to be here tonight, but she really stepped in and provided some good leadership, good public appearances. She was available to answer questions and interface with the public, which was a great thing from our standpoint. I think our community expects our leader to be out front on these important issues, and she was there. So we want to say thanks to her, even though she's not with us tonight. Secondly, there were other people in the administration. Dr. Andrea Celacote was involved, and what I'll say is that there was -- there came a point in time for probably the last 10 weeks of the campaign, there was always a Friday morning meeting, a strategy meeting to check in where we are, who has what assignment, that kind of thing. And it was very effective in terms of, on the spot, weekly, figuring out what the strategy needs to be on a daily basis. Some board members were able to participate in those meetings, but we particularly had some consistency from Steve Chigallis, who is our business manager, and our Director of Communications and Community Engagement, Angie Shaker was there. I think everyone. I think Steve's title is actually Director of Business Services, I believe. Yeah, so I apologize, Steve. So anyway, all the efforts in terms of organizing the visits to the high school, the tours of the high school and everything, we have to thank Angie and her staff, and we have to thank Steve for getting our custodial staff lined up and everything. And I thought that worked really well in terms of the people who were actually able to come in and visit the high school. And there was some visitation at the middle schools as well. So all of that kind of came together, and as they say, it was a perfect storm. So it was great for us, and again, I really do appreciate it. We would also like to thank the PTA presidents. The parents in the community look to the PTA presidents for guidance. They say, you know, what should we be doing about this? What are the things that are important? And I'll tell you, in our community, there are certain people turning to certain other people. So PTA presidents are really powerful individuals, and we always want to remember that and not forget, because the PTA presidents are the everyday person at some of these schools. That's who they're going to go to to get their information. So we want to make sure to keep them in our thoughts and be sure to say, when we see these PTA presidents, we need to thank them. They did a great job of opening up the schools and engaging parents in our community. So I got -- I hope they're here. I got Penny Neeson. Is Penny? Penny's at Canterbury. I'm going to call you in a minute. I want to recognize all the PTA presidents, and then I'm going to call you in another piece of the -- but Penny is at Canterbury, and we have Yvonne Dowell. Is Yvonne here? Yvonne's at Noble. And Heather Conwell at Oxford. Is Heather here? I guess Heather didn't make it tonight. And then we have Jennifer Holland and Rosemary Rackle Pierce from Roxboro. Neither one of those? Okay. We really still do thank you. And I think Marcy Denton. Did I see her? I saw her last night. She's not here either. And finally, we have Adrian Williams from Wiley. Okay. Well, let's give our PTAs a round of applause. The other thing that I think I'll do right now is just acknowledge, and I think we would like the three co-chairs to come forward and remain standing while we call the rest of the group. And the co-chairs are Alvin Safir, Dave Tabor, and Patrick Long. We are all convinced that we can't say thanks enough, but we really do extend our gratitude for you leading Issue 81. As you know, it's not often easy for us to get people to lead campaigns, and these guys stepped forward without hesitation and say, yeah, I can do it. So let's thank you. Given the strong performance on Issue 81, it's clear that there was some good communications with community members. We had people passing our yard signs, having breakfasts, lunch, and dinner conversations with various community groups every day, and that, in fact, won the support for the issue. It was a real team effort. So I want to recognize some of those volunteers, and I'd like them to come forward and join the co-chairs. I think Chrissy Gallagher might be in the audience. Come forward. Dallas Schubert. I didn't -- is she here? Okay. So Royal Queen Tabor, and John Benedict. John lives in the community, and he also was kind of our chief strategist, and really consulted with us the whole way. There are a couple of people that we wanted to come forward. I think Donna Gilmett was treasurer, but she's not going to be here tonight. Don Frederick did a marvelous job of orchestrating, getting the 1,500 yard signs out, and it looked like they were everywhere. You thought we might have had a million or something, but that was a great job of strategically placing those yard signs. You couldn't drive through the district without running into one every few steps or something like that. But anyway, we want to thank all of you. And there's a -- these people you should get to know, because when we get ready to do bond issues or levy campaigns, we always want to be prepared to help.
What is he getting ready to say?
We always want people to step forward.
No one's standing up tonight.
Oh, stop recruiting. Okay. But we can always use help. And one of the interesting things that this group came together on is that they felt like we can't just start getting ready when we have something that we know we're going to be on the ballot. They want to talk about, with you, what it means to have sort of a continuing, ongoing effort to make sure that we are well positioned, we're communicating the right things, so that we would be ready any time we need to pass a levy or a bond issue. And I also want to tell you that this doesn't happen easily. The board plays a significant role. I think the board, in general, tries to stay out of the front of the camera or whatever. But the board is definitely there, and it was an important -- if you think about the year and a half or so that we've been involved with thinking about putting a bond issue on the ballot, the board was real strategic in thinking through what it took to be in the ballot at the right time. So I think we ought to thank the members of the board as well. Now, here's a -- you know, I kind of sort of got a script, but here's what I'm going to do. Would any of you like to take a minute or two and say anything?
Yes.
Then do it.
Come to the microphone.
Yep.
Thank you, Ron. One of the extraordinary things about the district employees who gave so much of their time is, of course, they were doing that at these meetings at 7:30 in the morning on their own time, and were doing their work at night when they could have been with their families. So I want to note that, because one of the things that I'm most grateful for is the families of those of us who were at a lot of these meetings, and I want to include the custodial staff at our schools. If Dennis Dadich Taj Dog at the high school know every square foot of that building and have kept it functional despite its age. And I was at the school today. I was in the Renaissance office, and I noticed that there was a leak from the ceiling dripping on my head, so I can tell you the need remains urgent. But also, there's a few people who actually see here tonight that did a lot, not just over the last bond campaign, but over the year before that. I see Eric Silverman, Alan Wilkinson, Sam Bell, who were instrumental in the work of the Sustainability Working Group. I want to thank everyone who voted for or against Issue 81, because more important than your particular take on the issue is the fact that you take the trouble to learn about it and exercise your civic responsibility to vote. So those folks are going to be an important part of the process going forward to make this actually become reality. I want to thank again the Board of Education, because in 2012, the board was on a course and then heard the community say, let's take a timeout, let's hit the pause button, let's see if we can get this better. And I think we did, and I think that's a big reason we had the success we did in 2013. Had we proceeded as on the road we were on in 2012, we'd be having a different conversation. So it's always great to follow the students who are up here, because that's the reason we do all of these things, the kids and the teachers who make it all worthwhile. Thanks -- thank you to everybody who has been part of this whole process to date, and for all of you who may not know it yet, but will be doing some of the work in the years to come. Thank you.
I want to pay -- I don't want anybody to leave yet. I want to do two things. I'd like for the three co-chairs to come forward and -- come forward. And yes, I was asked to -- there are a couple of things that happened. Eric Silverman is -- was a part of the campaign, and he also has been the head of the Alumni Foundation. Alumni Foundation would like to take a minute and recognize you guys.
For those of you who have a memory or a web browser and go to the Alumni website, I think it was nine years ago, the Foundation began an idea for tearing down the science wing, building a new pool, and replacing a lot of the classroom spaces we have at Heights with new spaces. Wasn't as broad as Issue 81, but we saw a lot of it in what was past. So we're very happy and appreciative of the district and the chairs and the community making that a reality, and we're hopefully, the Foundation will be able to part of it in the future. So I have some gifts for our three co-chairs. Their size, so by this time, I know your size is.
I won't take the media.
Oh, I also.
Yes. Aren't we? I'm done.
Are you done?
No, I have two more freebies.
Okay.
Not for you guys. You guys got your stuff. You can.
Don't go anywhere. Just hang around with us.
Yeah, it's two more hours of fun, man. You don't want to take off. So also, very key people, from a staff perspective, were Angie Shaker and Steve Chigallis, so we have some presents for Steve and Angie. You're not a media, are you? So thanks again to all the --
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for, again, making issue when anyone happened. Back to Ron.
Okay. The PTA presidents, I would like for you to come forward, if you don't mind. Let us get a picture of you. Yeah, I think it -- what was it, four here?
Yeah. So really, we want to recognize all the PTA presidents, but the people you named are the people who were -- that they were going to be.
Are there any other PTA presidents here? I know Penny's here, and I think Ms. Dowell.
Okay, come on up.
Anybody else here? Anybody else feel like a PTA president?
To stand in for the two that couldn't make it.
That's okay.
So what school are you representing?
Roxboro Elementary.
Oh, okay. So now we got three co-presidents. Okay. All right. What's your name?
Brenna Lysowski.
Brenda?
Brenna.
Brenna Lysowski.
Lysowski.
Okay, that's good. For the record.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much. Now, what we usually say, if there are people who came to see that and they want to leave, they can, but we got more stuff happening. Don't leave. So finally, in terms of recognition, we want to recognize our dedicated board member, Karen Jones. Karen -- Karen's term ends this month. Karen has been on the board since 2010 and served as board president in 2012, and we would like to thank her for her commitment to improving our schools and for her dedication as a member of our group. She has been a great -- she has made a great contribution to the positive direction in which we've gone these past years. Tomorrow's board workshop, 5:30, if anybody wants to know, right here.
Delisle.
At Delisle. I'm sorry. Thanks. Will be Karen's final board meeting, and we would like to wish her all the best and bid her farewell. Board member, let's all come forward to the front of the room to take a picture with Karen, but you might have a thing or two you want to say to her in terms of the memories of these last four years. You want to say something to her, to the audience?
I do. Well, I just have a couple of things. I don't know what everyone else wished to say. I just want to, in particular, two things. One is deep gratitude to Karen for always -- for bringing the teacher's perspective, for keeping that in the room at every one of our meetings, and always bringing that to the table of what's going to affect the teachers, which will then affect the kids. And there were times when it's easy to get lost in some of the other details, and it was really always useful to have somebody who would step up and say, well, is this going to actually work in the classroom? And here, and from experience, be able to ask that question, as well as thinking of the students themselves, and is, how is this going to affect our kids, and all of our kids, and every decision we make? How is that? Is this practical? How will we make this work? And for bringing your experience and your passion about that, I'm deeply grateful. And then I also just want -- it's not gratitude particularly, but I have appreciated these last four years to have another fellow theater artist on the school board as well. So on a personal level, it's always been nice to know that. So thank you for the four years, Karen.
I'm waiting for my big break. Don't forget.
That's right. I was working on it right before I got here.
Karen, well, first of all, we're really going to miss you. We're going to miss your beautiful voice at all the birthdays. By the way, for those who weren't here in time, this is Karen's birthday week. We celebrated an entire week during her birthday.
Yes.
It culminates on Friday, Saturday, the actual day, on Saturday, 21st. But what Eric said is exactly right. The fact that you always had this unrelenting focus on the students meant the world. So I always knew that when you were deciding, whatever decision you were making, you always had the kids in mind, which is the reason we're all here. You brought the teacher's perspective, but you brought the teacher's perspective in terms of how does that best affect the students. You have amazing heart, you have the courage of your convictions, and I know this is a bittersweet day for you, and it's a bittersweet day for us as well, but we've really enjoyed the time. Thank you so much.
I hate to have to follow. See, she always does that to me. She goes, uh-oh. I'm thankful that Karen sings loudly, because I can't sing at all when we have to sit up here and sing "Happy Birthday." But Karen, I have just so enjoyed getting to know you and working with you. I really have. I know you always joke with me about we give each other a hard time, but I've really appreciated your -- the passion that you bring to the position, your advocacy. I see that as kind of a central part of who you are, and so I'm absolutely going to miss that. You can joke with me all you want. Don't get teary, honey.
I'm sorry. Have fun.
We celebrated an entire week during her birthday. It culminates on Friday, on Saturday, the actual day, on Saturday, 21st. But what Eric said is exactly right. The fact that you always had this, an unrelenting focus on the students, it meant the world. So I always knew that when you were deciding, whatever decision you were making, you always had the kids in mind, which is the reason we're all here. You brought the teacher's perspective, but you brought the teacher's perspective in terms of how does that best affect the students. You have amazing heart, you have the courage of your convictions, and I know this is a bittersweet day for you, and it's a bittersweet day for us as well, but we've really enjoyed the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi. I hate to have to follow, oh, see, she always does that to me. She goes, uh-oh. I'm thankful that Karen sings loudly because I can't sing at all when we have to sit up here and sing Happy Birthday. But Karen, I have just so enjoyed getting to know you and working with you, I really have. I know you always joke with me about, we give each other a hard time, but I've really appreciated your, the passion that you bring to the position, your advocacy, I see that as kind of a central part of who you are. And so I'm absolutely going to miss that. You can joke with me all you want, don't get teary, honey.
I'm sorry. I'm fine, I'm fine.
But I really, I really have enjoyed getting to know you, and I'm going to miss you.
Well, I'm going to miss you too. But Karen always likes to give me a hard time because she thinks I'm giving her a hard time.
I always give him a hard time.
But I do appreciate, Karen brought some important pieces to our work, and she would always ask, where are we in terms of diversity, and what does the staff look like, and how do we make sure that we're understanding who we're serving in the classroom, and that we're meeting their needs, and not somebody's written text or something that's taught in college, but really getting down and being able to understand who our students are and being able to meet them where they need to be, where they are. What I'd like is to have the board members join Karen up front. Is that okay?
Sure.
And what I want to do is to present the token of our appreciation when we get down there, and maybe we'll take a picture or two. The other thing that I have is a gift from Alumni Foundation. Just so you know, Karen is a Heights alumni, and that doesn't, alumnus, I guess.
Class of 81, right? It's class of 81.
And that doesn't.
Class of 81, that's why the issue was 81.
Right, class of 81, which is why issue 81 passed.
So Karen? This is from all of us. You can if you like, you want people to see where we're here? They're not here, no.
No one else gets to see, but.
Yay, they didn't see it, how long does that last, what they can see?
Because I don't give birthday or Christmas anymore, so this is like.
Rob's going to put a picture himself there, but we chose you.
Oh, excuse me. He wanted me to take your picture, I know. This is a tiger. Oh, an apple.
A year of presidency.
Thank you. Do I put this down to the eyes?
This year was super.
Thank you, Alumni Association. Feel my sweet bill.
One of the real joys of having Karen on the board was to get to know her mother. Ms. Gorman, would you stand and let everybody see you and recognize you? And finally, Karen has asked us to indulge her and you for a minute, because she'd like to say a thing or two to us. Is that okay, Karen?
Sure. Well, actually Nancy Dietrich told me I would get to say something, so I wanted to make sure I was prepared. I'm just following the great Nancy Dietrich. Oh, I think I should have brought my glasses, but I might be okay. You know, I'm still trying to come to grips with needing glasses now. Okay, just a few short remarks and comments to express my gratitude and hopefulness over the past four years and for the future. First and foremost, I have to thank God for blessing me with the abilities to pursue this wonderful opportunity. All that I am and ever hope to be, I owe it all to my heavenly Father. Thank you to my family, especially my mother and my daughter, for enduring the countless meetings and hours over the last few years. I would also like to thank my husband, who travels a lot, but I would like to thank him for supporting me as I pursue my dreams and my goals. Thank you to the numerous supporters and doubters throughout the years who helped to get me here and also made me work extra hard to validate that I belonged here. To the administration, faculty, staff, parents, and students, I truly hope that the district is a little better because of my sincere efforts to restore the roar and support you in any way that I could for the betterment of the district as a whole. Lastly, to my colleagues of the Cleveland Heights University Heights Board of Education, thank you for welcoming me in, although you were not sure what to expect. However, once we began to work together to restore the roar, I believe we became a force, a united front, that helped to make progress in our district. We worked as a team, while not always agreeing, but always wanting the best for our communities, our district, and our students. The four of you have empowered me in ways you cannot even begin to imagine, so thank you again. In closing, I would like to leave you all with one final thought. When I arrived four years ago, I arrived wanting to restore the roar, to be a part of the renaissance that I felt was beginning, not because I felt the roar was lost, but because I didn't feel that people were recognizing the mightiness of the tiger that is within the district. During my four years, we as a board have had many accomplishments. Increased instruction time, new scheduling throughout the district, a partnership with the Cleveland Heights, with the City of Cleveland Heights for student parking, postponement of any major action regarding Milliken, race to the top award, passage of the operating levy, introduction of pathways, administration restructuring and cutting administration costs, hiring of 40 new teachers, Wiley's growth, being effective and a school to watch, a town hall meeting with Cleveland Heights and University Heights leaders, the formation of the lay facilities committee, the Tiger football team's historic seasons, and making it into the playoff, as well as the other sports teams in the district, Roxboro Elementary becoming excellent, passage of the bond issue, a new facilities master plan, and commitment of a new superintendent search. In closing, we are making continuous strides to restore the roar, to restore the roar. And as we continue to work towards excellence, my final message is, let's all remember the legacy that Cleveland Heights, University Heights was built on, and that is high expectations. In the 1960s, when my parents moved to Cleveland Heights, University Heights, there were high expectations that I was expected to meet by my teachers, principals, and my parents. And in turn, each group had high expectations for each other to help me reach my full potential. It did not matter where I came from, or what my parents did or did not do for a living. My hope is that we as a district will come to the realization who we really are, and at the same time, not only setting high expectations for all of our students, but working as a team to empower each other to achieve our goals. That's the administration supporting the teachers, and teachers supporting the students. I ran because I believed in this district, and as I leave from an incredible experience, I am hopefully optimistic that the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District, with its new and improved buildings, dedicated administration, faculty and staff, parents, and most importantly, our students, will continue to restore the roar and continue the legacy of the Tiger. Thank you all again, and God bless.
We have some statements from the audience. I think we have about four people that signed up for that. I want you to remember that we're giving you five minutes, and the clock will be ticking once you come up. When you get to the mic, state your name and your concerns. Okay. First, we have Joan Spurrel, and Joan wants to talk about stadium and field renovations.
Good evening. Congratulations to all of us on the facilities bond issue. We have a reason to celebrate, but I know that there's going to be a lot of pressure on you going forward to move with great care, and you've got a great responsibility to make sure that all of this is done right for the long term and to keep the trust of the community. I'm elated and I'm excited, and we'll do all I can in a positive way to support all of that. I want to, I'm here to say that I support the renovation, as you know, of the field and the stadium. You have heard from me many times in writing about concerns that I have, that you consider, you know, carefully consider your options when it comes to getting the bids. You're going to be hearing from Steve Shergalis later with recommendation on moving forward on it, and getting bids for an organic natural turf field versus a synthetic turf, getting bids on both. And I really thank you for listening to me, thank you to Steve and to George Petcak for meeting with me and listening and reading what I had researched about the costs of both options. I will continue to feed you information that I've gained. I just recently learned that the synthetic turf industry is now putting flame retardants on the fields, some of these fields have started on fire, and those have been banned in California, as you know, because they're highly toxic. So I'm gonna, I know that you've heard about my concerns, and I just want you to, again, keep in mind, as you consider this, the long-term costs and/or benefits to the students, to their offspring, to future generations, to our environment, to the watershed, to the district's budget. As you know, the organic turf fields cost about one-third of a synthetic turf field. They cannot handle quite as much playing time, they need some rest, so I'd like you to consider thinking about also renovating maybe Forest Hill Park fields with cooperation of the city, using those. Children are not, adults, even teenagers have developing systems, and they can't detoxify toxins in the way that you and I can, they're much more sensitive, and they shouldn't be guinea pigs. We, so we need to think about the fact, well, let me just read here from the experts. Children are more vulnerable to toxins and are unable to process them due to their rapidly developing bodies and organ systems. The negative health effects might not show up for years, but public health pediatricians now recognize that even low exposures to toxins can have dire, long-term consequences for children and their offspring. Dr. Philip Landergan, the renowned pediatrician and director of Mount Sinai's Children's Environmental Health Centers, has cited three additional concerns about synthetic turf fields. Dangerous temperatures, staff infections from abrasions and turf burns, and injuries such as turf tone. He recommends that communities delay installing more of these fields until questions about their safety have been studied more thoroughly. I've shared those with you. Again, I'll continue to share, I want you to also consider the long-term disposal costs for synthetic turf field. Those can run up to $130,000, so they last about 10 years, and then you need to put them in a landfill. Again, think long-term, what is good for our long-term health, the environment, and the watershed? Do we really want to be increasing our exposure to toxins? Do we really want to be filling our landfills with plastic products? Plastic in and of itself, even without the crumb rubber, lasts for hundreds, thousands of years. I've, there's concerns about plastic pollution in Lake Erie and in the ocean. Lake Erie has one of the worst problems with plastic pollution of all the Great Lakes. Do we really want to further contribute to that or not? If you were going to do a synthetic turf field, I'd want you to consider putting rain gardens all around the perimeter of the field to diminish the negative effects from the runoff from the toxins in the field. Ideally, of course, I want you to go with organic turf because it's more economically viable and environmentally viable, and there's absolutely no negative health implications. So thanks.
Thank you.
And I just want to, I would like to ask you to just, each of you pass that video along, that explains my mindset from experts, and then this is an article about plastic pollution in Lake Erie, in case you're not aware of it. And I'll be feeding you more, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for all your work.
Next, we have Penny Neeson from Canterbury PTA, and her topic is academic calendar, particularly on Election Day.
Good evening, my name's Penny Neeson, and I'm the president for the Canterbury PTA. I have a couple of different things to talk about, but first, I want to make sure I get those comments about the academic calendar out. We had a lot of concern in our parent and our teacher community about managing traffic and security in the schools in the light of some of the new security concerns nationwide, withholding the election inside the school while school's in session. We also struggled to adequately manage traffic before and after school during the drop-off times with that particular piece of real estate. On a lighter note, with the help of a few lightsabers and a couple of volunteer parents, we were able to direct traffic and keep children from getting hit. But we feel like maybe some more insight could be put into how the fall schedule and the academic calendar is organized, so that teacher workdays coincide with opportunities like holding the election inside our school real estates. And we just wanted to put it out there, we did collect some notes from parents through our Facebook board, we collected some comments from teachers, as well as from the board staff, the folks that were there, that expressed a lot of concern about just the logistics of how to best organize that setup with the limited notice that we get from the Board of Elections about the space they'll need and how they need to be organized. We get about 12 hours' notice. So in past years, we've had school off, this year, we had school on. We felt that it was a challenge, and would like you to consider in future years, when you set the academic calendar, to consider not holding school during Election Day. The other thing I wanted to say was, you know, thanks for the recognition, but it really wasn't me. It was our whole Canterbury PTA community, specifically our Canterbury correspondent, Patty Carlisle. She couldn't be here tonight because she's graciously agreed to attend almost every other district meeting in the last two weeks. So if anybody's doing a newspaper write-up and has an opportunity to give Patty some recognition for her work, that'd be great. The other person is Molly Burke, who did a lot of grassroots organization to get signs and flyers distributed. But the two of them canvassed our real estate on the sidewalks, let me restate that, the perimeter of our school real estate on the day of elections to let people know that there was something worth voting about, and pass out information that was preassembled by our PTA to inform people, so they could go in and not only make a vote, but make an informed vote. So while neither of them could be there tonight, I think it's worth recognizing them. The third thing is, our PTA has gotten very active in researching issues. We have a very strong, maybe strongest group of parents to do grassroots research and community organizing to understand proactively what's going on in our district. January 15th, at 6:30 PM, we'll have our PTA meeting, and we'd like to invite the board to attend. We're going to talk about Alice, and we're going to talk about the Common Core. These are fact-based meetings where some of our most passionate parents who have researched these issues. So while neither of them could be there tonight, I think it's worth recognizing them. The third thing is, our PTA has gotten very active in researching issues. We have a very strong, maybe strongest group of parents to do grassroots research and community organizing to understand proactively what's going on in our district. January 15th at 6:30 PM, we'll have our PTA meeting and we'd like to invite the board to attend. We're going to talk about Alice and we're going to talk about the Common Core. These are fax-based meetings where some of our most passionate parents who've researched these issues will bring the information together for other parents in our community. And we'd like to open up the opportunity for you to come and attend. So we'll be sending you an email, but we would really like to open up the dialogue, not only for us to come up here and learn from you, but if you're available, for you to come and hear what the parent concerns are as well. This is it.
What time is that meeting, number 15?
Wednesday, January 15th at 6:30 PM.
Okay. Thank you.
We typically provide dinner. It's not really fancy, but it's great home cooking. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Sam Bale, who wants to speak of the Facilities Accountability Committee.
Hi, and I am Sam Bale. Thank you, all of you, for your service and leadership. A number of community members, including myself, have been engaged in a series of discussions regarding the Board of Education's recently-announced Facilities Accountability Committee, its purview, and its structure. Some concerns have been raised, and my purpose tonight is to share these along with some suggestions which have emerged from these discussions. I suspect you've anticipated most of these, but would like to share them with you for the sake of efficiency and transparency as you proceed. I've been given to understand by the district's Director of Communications that the description of the FAC's tasks and responsibilities, as originally posted on the district website, was not meant to be taken literally, that it was instead merely descriptive of the types of duties and responsibilities with which the FAC may ultimately be tasked and was not intended to be interpreted as an exhaustive, inclusive, or exclusive list. Thus, it provides at best a framework or outline of an evolving concept. I note, however, that this original description was still posted as of 10:00 PM last night. The original concept is announced during the levy campaign called for a Bond Accountability Commission to track the dollars. The newly-announced FAC as first posted on the district website goes well beyond this. And while the intent is certainly laudable, the scope of the new FAC seems extremely broad, as perhaps it must be if it is to accomplish the tasks set forth on the district website, which include monitoring the implementation of and revisions to the facility's master plan, as well as monitoring the status of construction, financing, and fundraising, monitoring proposed and actual construction costs, and facilitating community engagement in school planning, construction contracting, and construction workforce. Now, a new post, as of 12:04, retreats from this broad description stating instead that the mission is to review and regularly report to the Board of Education regarding the status, progress, and expenditure of funds for Phase 1 of the district's comprehensive plan as authorized by district voters as Issue 81 in November 2013. So the first question the Board must be prepared to answer is, which description is more accurately reflective of your desires? Among the major worries is the sheer amount of work the oversight efforts will require. This is a very complex project. It's full of details, both large and small, and each one is important. I would hope that the Board will encourage the formation of such working groups as the FAC may deem appropriate, and I'm sure that you will provide suitable support in terms of venue, access, and supplies to allow them to supplement the FAC's work in monitoring these details. Another significant worry is that expertise beyond the lay level may be required to adequately oversee some aspects of the facility's project. It's my understanding from Mr. Shergalis that the owner's representative will likely engage the services of a variety of professionals to provide a peer-reviewed cross-check of some of the engineering and design elements of the project. I know that the Board will direct the owner's representative, the construction manager at risk, the architects, and all of their consultants to cooperate fully in sharing whatever information they have or may develop with the FAC or its working groups on request, right? Now, while it would be nice to believe that the district's interests and those of its contractors will be perfectly aligned at all times, I'm here to tell you that in the real world, it ain't necessarily so. The reality is that each organization is most likely to act in its own perceived self-interest. This raises the question of exactly when and how the FAC should alert the Board to any apparent deviation from the prescribed project goals. A clear mechanism should be spelled out in advance in order to ensure timeliness, efficacy, and consistency. The issue of monitoring revisions to the current plan should receive careful additional guidance from the Board at the earliest possible time. Since ultimate accountability for this project's successful completion lies with you, the Board, it would seem inappropriate to give the FAC the authority to approve changes. Typical renovation and construction projects of this magnitude may involve literally hundreds of proposed revisions, each with its own small impacts on usability, cost, or other aspects of the endeavor. I'm almost done. Will the BOE review each one? Will it delegate this authority to the owner's rep? What will you do? I'm submitting a written copy of these remarks along with a number of other questions and suggestions to you for your perusal. Thank you very much, and thank you for all you have done and all you continue to do and for the remarkable success of Issue 81. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you. There you go. Okay. I think we probably have one more. Barbara Levin on separate swimming?
This is all one thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I've been in touch with Steve Shergalis, and I represent the Orthodox Jewish community, which is a vital part of Cleveland Heights. And while I know that it's vital that Issue 81 passed and hopefully the buildings will be renovated and good things will happen from it. But the fact is, in the Orthodox community, most people choose to send their kids to private schools. And while that is our prerogative to do that, we, as a direct benefit from Issue 81 and from the tax and levies that pass, we actually receive very little benefit. We do receive some busing, but other than that, we don't use the school facilities, we don't have used the teachers, et cetera, et cetera. So each time that a levy is passed, it's a lot of money for us to put out of our pockets for, like I said, very little benefit. So I have been in touch with Steve Shergalis in reference to the idea of separate swimming at Heights High. I know that through the recreation center, there are swim hours offered, but because in the Orthodox community, it's separate with men and women, we can't make use of those hours. And so I've, I'm requesting to have some separate hours, and it seems like that's a viable option. And as I spoke with Steve, he said that if it was, I was actually only interested in the women, but he said if it's for women, it also has to be for men and the same kinds of hours and days. In other words, if it was, say, 8:30 to 9:00 at night for the women, it would have to be 8:30 to 9:30 for the men as well on a separate night. So, in line. So what we're requesting is if we can have these hours within the next few weeks set in place at Heights High. And Mr. Shergalis also said that there would be cost to pay for the custodian and to pay for the lifeguard, which would be around $40 or $50. But I'm also requesting, given the Issue 81 that has passed, and maybe it is targeted for other monies or other sort of channels, we're requesting that we get the separate hours and also that the custodian and the lifeguard be paid for. And we look forward to, I've been in dialogue with the rec center and with Steve Shergalis for a while, and I'm really hoping that we can come to a mutual understanding. And also because the Orthodox community is a vital part of the community. We are a stabilizing part of the community. We're a very vital part of the community, and we really hope that you consider this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. So we are moving forward. And thank you. I know that we're going to get down to the real business now, so I know that some people might want to leave. Take care, and we appreciate everything. Okay, this gets us to the superintendent's report. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Seliko.
Thank you, Mr. Register. Our first item this evening is regarding the repealing of the Board Policy 3220.03 regarding the evaluation of teachers on limited contract, and this will require a vote. This will be your second reading. The reason for this, if I need, just may refresh your memories, is that we had two policies at one time, and there's two that are in existence right now due to OTES. So you all approved a policy a while back, and so in order for us to have just one, we need to repeal one of those. And so that's what this action is asking you to do, to vote to repeal one, so we will have the OTES one in existence.
Okay, so moved.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Questions?
This is our second reading.
Right. We only need two readings, right.
That's correct.
Mr. Gaynor, what you call the role?
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Thank you. Item two is an item regarding the approval of three field trips. One for the men's barbershop that will be going to a festival in Long Beach, California, and they will be in a competition as well as some performances that they will view. And the second trip is acapella choir and singers field trip to Charleston, South Carolina and Savannah, Georgia, while they too will be performing. And the third trip is for the Cleveland Heights High School Social Studies, grades 10 and 11, and it's entitled Close Up Washington. And I had an opportunity to review the itinerary, and it's quite well-done. And it's very specific, and it aligns with our Common Core state standards, and there are a number of workshops and visitations and seminars that the children will participate in, so it looks really good.
Can we approve all those in march?
I'll accept the motion to approve those three trips.
So moved.
Second? I just have one question with the Washington trip. Who's eligible to go? Do you know?
We, I know that the teacher was here this evening and forgot her name, I apologize, but she said she had about 15 students that were signed up to go. She was trying to recruit and get some more interest. So it's with her class. What was her name? I'm sorry.
Mrs. Karen Bower Blazer.
That's correct. Yes, yes. She'll be chaperoning. So she doesn't have the number just yet. Right now, it's 15.
At this point, I should disclose that I've been asked to accompany the men's barber shoppers to, I think, Long Beach, isn't it?
Yes.
And I've accepted.
Are you singing?
I'm not singing, thank goodness. They might have a chance to place without me. Anything else? Mr. Gaynor.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
And next, I'd like to ask Dr. Michler to come up, and he is going to speak to us, and I believe he may be passing it off, but we are going to receive our Race to the Top update.
Good evening.
And one of the main areas of Race to the Top, as we know, is teacher evaluation. Past summer, the Board passed the new teacher evaluation policy aligning to OTES. And at that time, we said, we're going to spend a lot of time this year in different trainings. And the ARC Committee, the Appraisal Review Committee, which is both by Board policy and by contract responsible for that, has been working very hard to do that. And probably the busiest time is coming up this January, and so wanted to ask Mr. Paul Lombardo, Director of Human Resources, who chairs the ARC Committee, to provide the Board an update of all these trainings that are occurring. So yes, I'm passing it off.
Thank you, Dr. Michler. Mr. Register, Mr. Gaynor, Dr. Seliko, and the Board. I want to talk to you a little bit about student learning objectives, called SLOs. The definition that the Ohio Department of Education gives is an SLO is a measure of teacher's impact on student learning within a given interval of instruction. An SLO is a measurable, long-term academic goal informed by available data that a teacher team sets at the beginning of the year for all students and for all subgroups for students. So you're asking, what does that mean, right? What we're going to be doing, the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, which we know as OTES, is part of, the evaluation system is 50% of a teacher's evaluation is based on student growth. And that is based on a student learning objective, which teachers will be coming together to put together these student learning objectives. So throughout the month of January, we're going to have teacher teams getting together, producing the student learning objectives, which are basically big ideas that teachers will come together and establish for a student learning objective. They're going to put together a pre-assessment so that all students in that particular class will take a common assessment. From that data, they're going to do short-cycle assessments. At the end of the year, they'll give a post-assessment, which will be common, and then they'll be able to see student growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. So with these student, these student objectives, we'll be able to see common growth. We'll also be able to be consistent in our classes. For example, every kid in a first grade or every kid in algebra, regardless of the teacher or where they are, will be getting the same skills and knowledge based on a common understanding. And that's what we'll be doing in January. Okay?
Any questions?
Don't think so.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I know that the work we've been doing in ARC, really, to their credit, has done an excellent job in organizing all of this with OTES and SLOs, and you'll hear all sorts of acronyms and all sorts of work that's being done, so we appreciate their efforts. And I know it's been a long process. We've been sending lots of drafts back and forth about SLOs, and there's a lot to learn, and we're still learning all of it together. So we appreciate your patience, and I'm sure there'll be more updates to come. So thank you, both of you. Next, I'd like to introduce to Mr. Klein, our teacher and our union president. I'd like to just say just a few words before he, as he comes up. Mr. Klein's been doing some great things, and we've had some conversations around community engagement and community involvement, and we hear from the public frequently about the need and the want to be involved in education. We heard that again here tonight. And so Mr. Klein, to his credit, has come up with some great ideas and is moving forward on some, looking to share with us tonight, some ways to engage the community on education and social justice. And so we're really, I'm really excited about his work and appreciate what he's been doing. So he's going to fill us in a little bit here tonight. So, Mr. Klein, if you will, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Register, Mr. Gaynor, Dr. Seliko, thank you for your kind words, the rest of the Board, fellow community people who are left. I really have two things I'm going to be speaking about today. One is on the Board agenda, and the other one I think I've already hounded people about. The Reverend Dr. William Barber, Disciples of Christ pastor and president of North Carolina NAACP, delivered a prophetic speech at an early October collaborative conference of the American Federation of Teachers, the National Opportunity to Learn Campaign, the National Education Association, Communities for Education Reform, and many of their allies. In the October keynote, Barber declares, quote, "When we stand together, our diversity is our strength that can help this nation move closer to what our founding documents say on paper." End quote. Nothing that today's political battle, noting that today's political battle is one of extremism versus those who believe in the Constitution. Barber challenges the crowd. "We are in a soul-changing moment as a nation. There has been too much progress in America for us to go back now." At the October conference, the two teachers' unions and their community and civil rights allies launched a joint collaboration around a set of principles that unite us. I believe- I believe Dr. McDaniel included this document in your packet, but I passed out a copy for you to look at as well. Anybody in the audience who wants one, I have plenty of copies as well available afterwards. "This thought-provoking call to action by a huge coalition group of unionists, faith leaders, parents, and a host of community organization was created to bring us all together to declare our ongoing intention to not be separated by those who want to destroy public education." I'm only gonna read the last two paragraphs, but there's, the rest of it's very good stuff. "Our interest in public schools is that we serve all children. We need schools that are rooted in communities, that provide a rich and equitable academic experience, and that model democratic practices. We want schools where the closest, where those closest to the classroom share in the decision-making and policymaking at all levels. We need schools where students feel safe, nurtured, and empowered to become productive adults, schools that provide an alternative to the prison pipeline that too many of our children are caught in. We believe that the only way to achieve these schools is by strengthening the institution of public education. We are not there yet, but we can imagine no other path. We are parents, students, and educators who have come to fight together for our schools. No longer will we allow ourselves to be divided. No more, now, more than ever, access to good public schools is a critical civil and human right. We are committed to working together to reclaim the promise of public education as our nation's gateway to democracy and racial and economic justice." The Cleveland Heights Teachers Union has endorsed this document. I urge the Board of Education to consider endorsing it as well, making it the first among the schools districts nationwide, unless I missed one of the endorsers. There were a whole slew of endorsers in the last page of this thing, and you can see that it is a really wide coalition of different groups. So that was one thing. Now I'm gonna go to the second thing. Okay? Because Dr. Seliko said I could, if that's okay with you guys. All right. "The Cleveland Heights Teachers Union, in concert with Reaching Heights, Future Heights, Heights Community Congress, PTA Council, the Cleveland Heights Public Library, the CHU-HA Administration, Link Education Consultants, and several community members invites everyone interested to attend a community book discussion on Diane Ravitch's book, Reign of Error." Here it is. That's what it looks like. It's kind of an ugly color, but you can buy it anyway. "We will have three sessions at the high school social room, starting on Wednesdays in January 22nd, from 7:00 to 8:30. As many of you know, Ravitch is an education historian who, among other things, worked in the first Bush administration. She changed her views completely after she saw that the data from the changes that she helped put in place, including No Child Left Behind, were hurting kids. In the book, Ravitch argues that the privatization approach that education reformers advocate for threatens the future existence of public schools in the United States. Reformers, quote, 'mask their agenda with rhetoric that is soothing and deceptive. Though they speak of reform, what they really mean is deregulation and privatization. When they speak of accountability, what they really mean is rigid reliance on standardized testing. When they speak of effective teachers, what they mean is teachers whose students produce higher scores on standardized tests every year, not teachers who inspire their students to love learning,' end quote. Our discussions will be lively and interesting. We want to attract a broad range of people to read the book and attend. The evenings will be mostly at tables facilitated through a few guiding questions. Childcare is available upon request. Books are being sold locally at discounted prices at Maxpecs on Coventry and Apple Tree on Fairmount, Cedar Fairmount. Information can be found through our website, C H T U dot O R G. Go to news. Pick up a bookmark, I think I forced it on all of you anyway, so the bookmark has a lot of the information on here, and we hope to see you at many of the discussions." Any questions? Either thing?
Thank you for organizing that.
It's been a pleasure.
Wednesday start, on the 22nd, and the next three Wednesdays?
Yes, 22nd, 29th, and February 5th. And your chapter assignments are on the bookmark, if you get a chance to read them beforehand.
Okay.
So, anything else?
And I might have missed, but with the principles that unite us, what is the, what's the tie-in with, I mean, I know what it's saying, but I'm just saying, yeah, with the dislike, when you say like to endorse it, endorsing it, then how can we utilize it? What can we do with it?
I'm not sure. I think that what's, what could happen is, if we have a lot of people who buy into this idea, I think it just makes us stronger because we know that there's other people who are doing the same thing we're doing, who have the same beliefs that we have in terms of our belief in public education and democracy. I don't know what's gonna come next out of that, because it was, it was not a union initiative, it was a huge coalition of people that got together. But they have an annual conference, so maybe in their interim between now and next October, they'll see what's going on and see who's interested, and maybe something will come of it as a next step. But it was, as a broader thing, and I know that for our union, AFT, we called it reclaiming the promise of education, and we were asked to look into things that we might do to spread awareness about some of the things that are really going on in public education. So the book thing really ties into that as a kind of a nice engagement, but it wasn't meant to be. I mean, because we were, we wanted you to do the principles that unite us like last month or something, so it's related, but it's not the same. But it's a good question, and I don't know. I don't know where it leads us. But I'm impressed by the endorsers on the list. It's a really phenomenal list.
Any further discussion? I think we did, Dr. McDaniel did send this out to us. I think we, at some point, soon really need to have a conversation about whether we're prepared to sign on, and these make sense to us. I haven't thought through this in my head, but if everybody could sort of get into this, maybe when we meet in January, we could have a conversation about it and see what we want to do. I'll remind everybody.
I believe it's really easy to get hung up on all those little details that go on in a district all the time, and looking at these broader pictures is really, I think that that will help us to see that we have a lot of commonalities with other people in other places.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We're ready to move to E personnel. We have E1 through 6, and I believe we can take them all at once. I'll accept the motion to approve the personnel items.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I just had one question. I saw in the Monticello basketball coach, Sherri Duncan, is that her name?
I don't know if that-
Her name was Denise. The basketball coach for the girls, grade eight. It says Sherri Duncan, but I thought her name was Denise. Does that sound?
I can check on that.
Okay.
We can make a, if we pass it now, we can make a correction?
Yeah.
At the next meeting? Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Kobel?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to Business Services. We need to do these separately, I think. We're gonna take a quick break. Proactivity of the President. Okay, Ms. Sugar, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So just a couple of comments. You know, since the passage of Issue 81, we've not been standing still. We've been working forward and moving ahead, in addition to all the work that people are probably aware of with regard to the middle school consolidation process that we've been going through. In addition, may not remember that the Board had quite a bit of discussion about project delivery methods for the high school project, and authorized the administration to seek RFQs, or requests for qualification statements, for the various consultants that we would need to assist us in moving forward with the high school design. And those were issued, we got responses back, we formed evaluation committees, and narrowed down selections for the various consultants, for architects, for an architect, for the construction manager, as well as an owner's rep. And for those who were really attentive, they may remember that tonight, we had planned to bring those contracts to the Board for approval. But given the scope and scale of those contracts, and the complexity of them, and the work that the evaluation committee had to do, we really wanted to take a little more time to allow the Board to really examine those carefully, and so we've put that for the January 7th Board Agenda, to bring those and have those for your approval. I did talk with Steve Zanoni from PMC and Terry Rivera about that, and they said that this would not slow us down at all in our process and the work moving forward. They said it's very common in projects like this for the consultants to begin doing work on an if-come basis prior to the actual award of contract. So they are still working, they're moving forward. We're gonna meet tomorrow night for one of our first planning sessions. We've got additional planning sessions scheduled with the administration and some other folks for the 6th and 7th of January, so we are still moving forward, and we'll see those contracts on the 7th. The other topic that I wanted to talk about was really one of the early projects that we're going to be considering, and that's the high school stadium. And I actually have some prepared remarks, I'm gonna go through those real quick, and then we'll go from there. So as we plan to implement the next steps in the high school construction project, one of our first priorities will be the many actions that will have to be taken to prepare the high school and Wiley sites for the real construction to begin. These steps include readying the Wiley campus to receive all of the high school students and staff, furniture, equipment, and educational materials that they'll need. We'll carefully prepare the existing Wiley building and the additional temporary modular classroom space that we needed to support our educational programs, from science and mathematics to music and athletics. We want this temporary high school to feel welcoming, to function efficiently, and to be a place that staff and students can be proud of for the two years that they'll call it home. We refer to all of this preparatory work, all of this work that needs to be done necessary before we move ahead with Phase 1, we call those the enabling projects. And over the next several months, we'll be providing the Board and community with additional details and information about these enabling projects as they're identified, and we'll be answering many of the questions that I'm sure families are probably wondering about. But for tonight, I want to focus in on just one of the many projects that we'll be discussing, and that is the high school stadium. As you're all aware, the current stadium is, and the existing grass field, the track, the bleachers, it's, all of it is in very poor condition. We've talked about it for many years, and that's why we included it in the Phase 1, you know, in our Phase 1 plans. In fact, the stadium condition is so bad that I've been approached by Kristin Hughes, the athletic director, and several of her coaches on numerous occasions, saying that we just can't keep putting that work off. Particularly, our most immediate concern is the track. For the past two years, we've had to bandage the track together, it's been ground down to asphalt and spots, and it simply can't be patched further. It's just frankly unsafe, and we need to fix it. It doesn't make sense to invest in a new track now and then do the rest of the work some 12, 18, 24 months later with the rest of the high school renovations. Instead, we can get the, instead, we can get the most, we can get most of the project done now, all at once, and do it right once. A further important consideration is that the Facilities Master Plan calls for the stadium to remain in use as a stadium, stadium swing space, in fact, throughout the construction period. That athletic swing space will demand even heavier use than the stadium currently gets, and the way it's configured right now, it simply is not gonna be able to support that usage. Frankly, it can't support the football, hardly support the football games we try to hold there now.
Steve, why would that be, why heavier?
Because we want to, because we're gonna have less availability of fields, we want to put more activities on that field.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna be losing fields, particularly the football field at Wiley.
Okay.
So possibly some of the fields, the baseball field and the softball field at the high school, so there's gonna be that need to really focus in on the fields that we have, particularly the high school stadium field. You may recall that the Facilities Master Plan budget included $2.63 million for the renovation of the stadium itself, and it makes sense for us to accelerate the renovation of the stadium, and I've initiated the process to design, bid, and renovate the stadium, starting in January 2014, with the actual renovation work occurring this spring and to be completed in time for the first home football game in the fall of 2014. Due to a push from community members to use artificial turf so that it can withstand more use, combined with the concerns expressed to me and this Board about installing a synthetic turf field at the stadium, and of course Joan was here earlier, Joan Sproul was here earlier tonight, I've had many, many conversations with Joan about this, as a result of that, I've asked the architect to design the drawings so that the contractors will provide us with bids for both a organic natural grass field and a synthetic turf field. And this way, we'll have additional hard data to assist us in making a final decision about which field we actually want to install.
Questions at the end?
Hey, I, go ahead, dive in.
I'm just, I'm sorry.
I've got just a few more things, but that's fine.
Well, I'm just, is that, is that part of the RFQ? Asking for that, I mean, of whichever, or has that?
We've identified an architect, OSports, we've been working with them for quite some time on this, and we've asked them to give us that, that alternative bid option. So-
That means they're gonna do a rendering, and then it's going out for bid?
They're actually gonna make documents. They'll actually make, because we've already gone through the process of talking about what it is we want to do, they're now gonna move ahead to actually make the drawings. Now, and they'll start that in January, is when they'll start that process. So they haven't started it yet, but they're slated to begin that work of actually making the bidding documents in January.
Is their cost part of the 2.65?
2.63.
It is. Their costs are, and I can provide the Board with an update on, because we now know the construction manager fees, as well as the architect fees, I have an update ready to share with the Board on where we are versus our overall master plan budget, because we've now got some actual numbers. So, good news is, we're about $1.7 million to the good right now, so.
Keep going.
Yes, yes, and, but we're, we've got a long way to go, so. And I can share those in an update later this week. So, in addition, the Board's, your commitment, the Board's commitment, our district commitment to invest this $2.63 million in the upgrades to the stadium should help Kristin Hughes and others who are attempting to raise donations for this project. Remember that we only funded the stadium at 50%. So, based on the master plan budget of $5.2 million that we had plugged in, we were hoping that we'd get some donations, so this commitment should help in raising those donations. And additional donated funds would allow us to add features that are not included in our current plans, things like concession stands, ticket booths, new walkways, plazas, landscaping, okay? So, lighting. There's a number of things that we're not able to do right now. The, what we're talking about implementing is replacing the grandstands, home and visitor, the field, and the track. And those are the things that are really the most essential that need to be done right now. So, the donated funds would either help us offset those costs or, and/or, help us do some of these other things. So, and then, obviously, this is, this is an important first step in our journey to building a new high school, and I look forward to bringing a contract proposal back to the Board for your review. So, that's the end of my prepared comments, and any other questions that you have, I'd be happy to take.
How does this impact spring sports this year? If you're going to, you said you're gonna start in the spring, right?
That's right.
So how does that affect spring sports?
It will, and I haven't had detailed discussions with Chris- It will, and I haven't had detailed discussions with Kristin about that. I know she's been thinking about that and has a plan. She and I just haven't talked about it in detail yet, so.
And with the bleachers, by any chance, would this include restrooms on the home side?
It does not right now.
Better get on that fundraising.
It would be nice.
It does not right now.
So you gotta wait for Bryce, you gotta wait for Bryce, that's his project.
Is the, is the architecture firm, do they have experience doing both synthetic and non-synthetic turf?
They do. O-Sports is probably, they're a subsidiary of Osborne Engineering, and Osborne Engineering has done stadiums throughout the country, and their, their home is right here in Cleveland, and have done numerous synthetic turf fields, natural grass fields, all the way from pro sports, college sports, high school. Yeah, very well experienced.
Just one other, has the, the teams that actually will use the field, like football and, well, lacrosse, they play at Denison, right? Or do they play?
Yeah.
So basically just football, right? And conversations with the coaches, do they have a preference between the organic grass and synthetic?
I have not spoken to them directly. I think there is, I think there is a preference for the synthetic turf. Because of its durability, its playability, the flexibility it gives them in doing things on the field that they can't do now, getting onto that field more, certainly the access to the field would be dramatically improved in terms of the number of things we could do.
I was going to say, it could be a moneymaker too.
Yeah, could be.
For renting out to different schools that don't have.
But, you know, it's, it's, the playability of the field, you know, it's, it's very difficult in this climate and in this environment to keep a grass field in really, really good shape. And so if we were just comparing an outstanding grass field and outstanding synthetic turf field, that'd be one thing, but we have to think real world, you know? And so that grass field gets chopped up, it gets used, it gets uneven, it gets unlevel, and so there's some challenges there.
And isn't it more advantageous, like with the ban, the ban to be able to practice on the field, and then the football team can come out afterwards without it being dug up?
Absolutely. Ban, the team itself, and this wouldn't just be for the football team, and we'd be able to bring other sports on this field that we can't bring on there now. So I, I think there are, you know, there's certainly a lot of factors to consider, there's no doubt about it.
When, when you said that the athletic director has a plan for the spring sports, could you submit that to us so we can?
Absolutely.
Sort of digest that? And I guess, we're having a discussion tonight, are you proposing any particular action for us or timeline in terms of when we need to act on this?
Well, the next opportunity for the board to act would be, once we have the bids in. And typically then I would bring a contract recommendation in the form of a, you know, an action, a business services action.
So we expect to get that done in January?
No, it'll probably be February, early March, yeah. Yes, yes.
Great. Couple of things, one, not about the, what you said originally, which you were talking about the enabling spaces. I just want to bolster the idea of being very careful about that. If I was going to point to a mistake we made when we went to small schools, I think we, everyone put a lot of energy into how, what the small schools would look like, and they forgot that there were a group of students who were sort of caught in limbo. And so they knew that small schools was coming, and so it was coming to the lower grades, and the upper grades felt completely disenfranchised. No one's fault, it's sort of, that's hindsight. So I would suggest that we really look, carefully look at, have the architects carefully look at, what can we do, what can we do programmatically that really does make a difference? I don't need you to.
No, and I, and I.
Clarify what you mean, I just want to understand his question.
Well.
Or your point.
Yeah, simply, so you're going to have students in what we're calling, right now calling swing space.
Right.
It's, their high school experiences is very important to them.
Oh, yeah.
So.
You mean my daughter's senior year?
That's, that's right. Good luck. No, no, but, no, the honest fact is, it is very important to them, and, and, you know, there are things that people think of doing that, you know, that seem somewhat superficial to me sometimes, you know, shirts are, I mean, that's great, but at the same time, I think it's very important that we give a little extra thought, or that the architects and the designers and the program designers give a little bit of extra thought, that in many respects, you have to go even a little bit extra for those kids, so that they feel like that someone really did care about them, even though recognizing the situation that they're in, so.
Sorry, Steve, I just wanted to understand.
And I clearly don't have an answer to how to do that, but just, I would appreciate an extra thought.
Well, and I think that that's one of the challenges we have right now, because really, if you think about it, we need to be designing two high schools.
Right.
Not one.
That's exactly.
We've got to be deciding, there's got to be a whole separate process to design the new high school that will be on the Wiley campus and be ready for the fall of '15, at the same time we are designing the new high school at Cedar and Lee. So, yeah.
But we have a bunch of really good minds in there, so I just, I just want to bolster that idea. So moving on to your other, a couple of things, one, just something to mention that I know you're aware of, but people who are listening might not be, through the process of selecting architect and a construction manager at risk, they, it was determined that the field, that the football field in that area is not needed for space for any of the workers at that time. So I think people might say, hey, well, what are you going to put the, that's actually was part of the plans, and, and actually even some of the people who didn't weren't awarded the, won't be awarded those contracts, they all recognized that that was part of the stipulation. So I just want to make that statement so that people know that it wasn't forgotten. I'm curious about compartmentalizing, so you're, so what I think I hear you saying is, is having an architecture firm designing the field, the stands, the track, the football field, but there's clearly an interface between the, the, the architecture that's coming in for the high school and that architecture. Can you speak to the fact, is there any wasted effort in there? Is there, are they talking to the architects who are going, how is that going to be handled if you're talking about compartmentalizing?
Well, I, first of all, there's no wasted effort. They will collaborate and coordinate together. I'm less concerned about the design collaboration than I am about the actual construction collaboration. So what I'm, and we haven't really finalized, it's a good question, I haven't really finalized this, I'm thinking that we may just work through our CMR, our construction manager, to implement the stadium. Because of the issues of control of the site and access to the site and so forth, that just may make more sense to have them do it. So, yes, so the answer to your question is yes, they, they will work together to make sure that there's no conflict.
An example, and I may be ignorant in this, in this, in a number of things, but in this topic, but what Karen mentioned, if you, if we raise enough money that we put a restroom for Bryce at the, on the home side of the.
I was saying Bryce was going to raise the money.
God bless.
He doesn't need the restroom.
Right. That means, unless plumbing's out there already, you got to run plumbing, so, so you don't want to design a field when you have to tear it up to run plumbing after the fact. So that's just an example that just came up tonight. So just, yeah, the interface is important.
Right.
And then what was my last thing? I talked myself right out of it.
Well, I can ask.
Yeah, go ahead, and if I think of it all.
Steve, you said that we were $1.7 million to the good, and I have to say, as board members, we think big chunks, right? I mean, we, everybody knows 134 million and things like that, but when it comes down to the little parts of the budget and pieces and what they cost, we're not there yet, or at least I'm not. So when you say 1.7 million to the good, I'm sure that that's completely understood for you. For me, it's not. I don't know what that means. I don't know, does that mean we just pocketed and 100, 1.7 million dollars and we can use it in year 10 to do something else? I mean, could you say a little bit about?
I can, and I, my intention was to explain all that in my update to you, I didn't actually come prepared to talk about it, but I can speak a little bit about it.
And.
In an update, I was going to do a written update to the, to all of you to explain all of it in detail, but.
Okay, that's fine.
But just to answer your question quickly, yeah, the answer is, yes, it's in your pocket. We put 1.7 million back into the board's contingency that we have to use for whatever we would like.
Clear what our pocket is, please.
The school district pocket, okay? The Board of Education.
Oh, Scott's pocket, okay.
Yeah, Scott's pocket.
But to be used for.
There's the point dealer headline.
Anything.
Building.
Anything related to the, that's right, anything related to the construction projects, that's correct.
Okay, because we have to clear about that.
Yes, and that's, that's a good point, absolutely, yes.
That shocked me in memory, my other point.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. You remembered it.
And I say that because in the CMR process, there is a thing called, probably getting more into the weeds than we need to, but, but there is a thing called the, the construction manager's contingency, and that's different than the owner's contingency, okay? So, so the good news is, this went into the school district owner contingency for use if future needs, whatever they may be on the construction, so.
Well, I, I guess, my question is, is, what will be sent out, is it also an RFQ for the stadium project? What, what's it called?
It would be an RFQ, we've gone through that process, so.
So, so will you ask, even though the dollars won't, well, the dollars currently available in issue 81 in the budget aren't available for the restrooms or for the landscaping or for the?
Lights. He said lights.
Lights, right. Will those be part of what you're asking them, the architect, to design, for example, in this first step? Or will you be asking for bids so that when Kristin and Coach Rotzky and others go out to, and others in the community who have offered to help us raise the additional dollars, will those, will those all be determined in this first step?
Yeah, they'll, they'll do a conceptual design.
Okay.
That includes all of those features.
Okay.
And they'll have budgets, established conceptual budgets, but we won't bid that, and they won't elaborate on those aspects of the work for bidding purposes.
Okay.
Not unless they come to me in the next couple of weeks and say, boy, we just got another half a million dollars or a million dollars, that would be different.
Okay.
Steve, oh, yeah, you had something.
That's fine, I can wait.
Okay. Steve, I hate to tell you, I struggle with this, and there are bits and pieces that, you know, I started thinking about. So my vision is that the Heights Tigers would defeat the St. Egg, they might be Tigers too, on that field. But when it comes time to dressing and showering and stuff like that, where are they going to do it? Where are the locker rooms?
Hmm?
Okay.
Well, well, I mean, there's, you know, I say this a couple of times every day, there's 10,582 steps to get this project done, and we're on step 183. That's step 1,242. We're not there yet. But, but I have had some discussions, Kristin Hughes brought that very question up. I suspect if I had to guess right now what we would do, we will probably have some modular locker space on the high school campus somewhere for the kids. That'd be my guess right now. I've not had a chance to really, you know, move forward without any kind of detail, but yes, that's a, there's all kinds of questions like that, Ron, there's a lot of them, and we're working on them.
Well, this is just, in part of that question, and I know that other high schools that were going through, like redoing their stadium and fields, and a lot of them use neighboring campuses, like Brush went to John Carroll, and, you know, other places have used Case Western Reserve, so, I mean, that could always be something else we looked into to see what the cost would be.
Yeah, there was a strong desire during the master planning process and throughout to keep the, that athletic complex operational during this renovation project. And so the whole master plan really has envisioned that, you know, that, that stadium could be renovated at appropriate time and would stay operational, we'd use it for swing space, we'd use it for the football team. I mean, that's kind of been our, our trajectory throughout, and this is really the next step is to say, well, when should we do it? And again, right now, the thought is better to do it sooner rather than later because of the condition of the stadium, because of the track, because of the need to use it for swing space, you know, for athletic swing space. So lots of good reasons to move forward with. Does it add a little bit of complexity? Yeah, it does, I agree. And lots of good questions, we need to work through all of those, but our, our feeling is now's the time to do it.
Oh, I agree.
So when we have these conversations about these things that we're going to need, is that our conversation, or are some of these people that are working with us, like the CMR, or the owner's rep, or the architects, are other people, are we having people help us think through what this means, or do we have to think through it and say, okay, if we need a modular unit for locker space, that's our thing, not part of the, it's part of the big picture?
No, that's, that's them helping us.
Okay.
They'll be helping us with all of this throughout. That's why we've got the consultant team that we've assembled, and I think we've assembled a very good consultant team with the help of the valuation committee members. And I'm, you know, I'm looking forward to talking about that on January 7th and getting them under contract, but again, they're already working, so, yeah, they'll be helping us.
Okay, I said, Mel, remember my question, but I got another one. So, and one, it isn't really a question, I'm sure this has been thought of, but especially with us losing baseball and softball fields, and knowing that there are some good baseball fields in the city, in the city of Cleveland Heights, for instance, I would just encourage us to be in contact with the city just to see if there's, if that's a possibility. Again, coordinate through the, through the athletic director, I'm not saying this is what we have to do, it's just a suggestion to.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the other thing I was going to say is, is simply, you know, we have heard about both the, the synthetic field and the organic grass field, it's clearly another passionate, there, there's interest on both sides that we've heard in the community. If, if at some point the board's going to need to make some, some decision on this, it would be important to have as much factual information on both ends of the spectrum as we possibly can. We've clearly heard very, again, passionate remarks on both sides, but it'd be important to find, find out if there are facts.
That's a good point.
That we could use to make the decision.
Well, to maybe even have the people that you were saying that had worked with organic and synthetic to come in, that maybe speak, and since they've worked with both.
You know, that, that's what popped into my mind, that we may want to get some experts from both sides, maybe, to talk about, talk to the board about the issues.
Yeah, that would be good. You know, I, I'm beginning to sense that we're going to have a lot of discussions like this, because I think we're pretty, we're pretty new at this, I think, so do bear with us, and I guess one rule of thumb is supply us with as much information as you can, as soon as you can, because these are important decisions, and we don't want to be running behind or holding up things because we haven't built our knowledge base. I think we all are invested in building a knowledge base around what we're doing. So information is key.
Well, and that, that will start tomorrow night, in the first, first part of that process, so, yeah.
All right, anything else on item F1? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there, how do you want to deal with what's left? Each one of those items one at a time?
Yeah, I think you should take them one at a time.
Okay, so we'll go to F2, which is an amendment and a resolution to amend the agreement between us and Coventry Village Children's Center.
Did you take a motion?
We need a motion, I need a motion, I'm sorry.
Phil, Lou, second?
Any discussion? Questions?
Yeah, they, they experienced a change in management, a little bit of delay, so they weren't able to start, but they're committed, they're doing some work, but we need to amend the lease, and so this is just a formality really.
Okay.
But important.
Okay. I'm sorry, just to refresh my memory, which corner, where are they?
They're in the old.
In the basement.
They're in the old, the lower level, the old cafeteria, right, exactly, yep.
Mr. Gaynor, would you call the roll?
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes. F3 is a resolution authorizing, executing an agreement with Precision Pump to provide replacement for the fuel storage tanks, which are right there.
That's right.
So, I'll accept a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobel?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobel?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
And four is a recommendation to approve payment in lieu. I think we need a motion for that as well.
Go move.
Second? I need a second.
No, second, I thought you were saying second, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess I could do that. Any questions? I mean, I think, no questions? Okay. Mr. Gaynor? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
And four is a recommendation to approve payment in lieu. I think we need a motion for that as well.
Go move.
Second? I need a second.
No, second, I thought you were saying second, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess I could do that. Any questions? I mean, I think, no questions? Okay. Mr. Gaynor? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
And four is a recommendation to approve payment in lieu. I think we need a motion for that as well.
Go move.
Second? I need a second.
No, second, I thought you were saying second, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess I could do that. Any questions? I mean, I think, no questions? Okay. Mr. Gaynor? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
And so, that takes care of business services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shergalis? And I think you're in the same situation with the finance, right? We need to take, we can approve them all at once?
Yes, you can.
Okay, then I'll accept a motion to approve G1 through 5. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion or clarification?
I just want to point out that items 2 through 5 are ones that you've not seen before, and these are requirements of the audit. So, we have a lot of cleanup of dormant funds, of moving class funds to the alumni foundation, and so on and so forth. The auditors want to see board approval for all these actions, which typically we've done kind of behind the scenes. You know, you approve final numbers, but they want to see all these actions along the way, so that's why you're seeing these here today.
Any questions? Okay. Mr. Gaynor? Yes. Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
So that gets us to the board president's report, and I want to say that two board members attended the OSBA Capitol Conference, and I think it was like November 10th through the 13th, I believe. And there were some staff members there as well. And it was a great conference from our standpoint, and I think Mrs. Zucker would like to give a brief report to the audience.
Sure. Yeah, it was, it was a good conference. You know, each year, they sort of seem to have some sort of theme, whether it's a stated theme or otherwise, and this one seemed to talk about different ways of learning and different, in fact, it's funny, because I went to, one of the ones I went to was the rethinking education and school design and thinking, you know, we're redesigning schools, and it actually was much more about sort of redesigning education. And part of, they always have these general sessions where there's large, large groups of people, and they usually have, at least one of the speakers is usually very entertaining. And this one was, and he started by talking about the fact, how different education is at this point in time, and that, you know, right now, it's hard to define what success means anymore. So, he was actually sort of humorous, he talked about the fact that his family had always thought that his daughter should be in math, science, and how important it was, and then she went into the humanities and even more so into the arts. And so, to his parents and the rest of his family, she was, he must be a failure as a parent, and he must feel like a failure. He stated, because he's, she's now away, she's gone through college, he stated that he doesn't feel like a failure because she's not living in his basement. And he sort of went on from there to discuss the fact that it's different now than it was early on. So, when you think of when Henry Ford created the auto empire, as it were, what he also created wasn't just this new technology, but also tremendous number of jobs. And now, if you look, and he had the numbers, and I don't have them written down, but if you look now at something like Facebook, where Mark Zuckerberg, no relationship, by the way, Mark Zuckerberg creates Facebook, and the total number of employees in Facebook is in the 6,000 range, I think, 6,650, maybe you remember. But because of that, what you start to realize is the job market is not the same anymore. So, so many more of the students, and we see this here in the Heights, many of our students are coming out, and they're looking for very, what we would call non-traditional jobs. And so, I think it actually, not to get overly philosophical, but I suppose you sort of got used to that from me. I found myself falling into discussions with some of the speakers, and one of them I found really interesting, Dr. Selko, I'm sort of going to throw this to you, because one of the things I think we should be thinking about, and that this OSBA conference sort of set me thinking about, is this moment of opportunity we have in the district right now. Because, you know, not only are we rebuilding all these buildings, but this, as we all know, when you change a person's environment, you maybe reinvigorate them. So, we have this moment of opportunity with our staff, we have this moment of opportunity with our students and our families, we have tremendous support from the community. And one of the things that we were talking about, and it was the superintendent I had engaged to talk about, we were talking about the differences in the way students learn now, and that in part, what she was thinking was, part of the problem is that we, as adults, don't process the same way some of the students do now. So, for instance, when a problem is, comes to us, we try and do the due diligence of all the homework associated with, what do you have to do to gather the information in order to solve the problem? Whereas, seemingly, a lot of people in the younger generation start to solve the problem first, and they go down along a path, and when they hit a roadblock, then they find out, what do I need to go to the next level? And clearly, this is not an either-or situation, there's some hybrid of this. But what we were talking about, as our conversation went on, was, you know, why don't we teach students, I think this is, with the two of us we're talking, why don't we teach students in terms of their readiness rather than their age and use technology as a primary tool? And how can we leverage some of these skills that they have to help us to teach better? So, again, I'm not making any, this isn't prescriptive, this is more sort of hopefully thought-provoking in some way. It was for me. One of the sessions I went to is called To Flip or Not to Flip. I went there because I couldn't figure out what it was going to be about, so I figured I got to see it. So, To Flip or Not to Flip, this is about a classroom in Twinsburg where they flipped the order, sort of going along the same theme. They flipped the order of the way they do things. So, instead of having a lecture in the classroom, that what they figured was lectures are readily available, they could, they can make them available online, they can make them available in a variety of different ways, but the important thing is the work. So, why not let the students do the work, or what was traditionally homework, in the classroom where they have immediate access to teachers to help them through that work? And then, they can, not only is the lecture available to them at the time, but it's available for review then. You know, again, I'm not suggesting we change this, it just is thought-provoking. So, I guess I found the whole conference very thought-provoking, and maybe that wasn't what you want me to report on, but what the heck?
Yeah, that was good. And we even managed to exchange some ideas between us, too. And we had a meal together, maybe a couple.
We did that.
Yeah. So, it was, it was a great conference, and I don't know exactly how, I think we're always challenged to think about how we use the knowledge that happens to come our way or that we stumble into or we seek out. And I think as a board, I can definitely say that we have had tidbits, like even these principals that you named, us, it's another little, some thinking out there that's sort of the state-of-the-art thinking about collaboration, how you come together and that kind of thing. And I think we're always challenged to figure out exactly how that gets used, and at the same time, staying in our role, you know? So, for me, that has always been a challenge, where is that line that we need to be thinking about in terms of us developing policy, as opposed to crossing that line and dealing with what's in the classroom or what's in the administration, that kind of thing? Anyway, I find it pretty challenging, and things like the OSBA Capitol Conference is always exciting in terms of seeing some things that other people are doing, and we had some really good exposure. One of the things that did come out, and that was interesting for me, is that there were some things around career technical education and sort of beginning to look at that path. And what really was a good thing for me was that I was able to see members from the other two Board of Educations that are in our coalition there and actually got to spend some time with them. So, it was a, it was a great conference for me, too. So, I should also say, moving on, that there is always a challenge for me to be able to pull off a successful meeting. And, you know, my stomach doesn't stop churning until it's over. So, but anyway, I'm hoping I'm okay on that. But anyway, what I did is I did have something that I wanted to say, and I didn't say it earlier when we were talking about issue 81, but I do want to recognize it, and Adele is still here, so she can carry the word back. I think one of the things that happened is the League of Women Voters did an early endorsement of issue 81, and I want to publicly say thank you, and I believe that that was another real key in terms of where we are. There were some other things that happened, but I, you know, the league is here, every board meeting, they report on us, and I just wanted to acknowledge publicly them coming out early and endorsing us. So, thank you. And I guess the only other thing I would say is that, you know, everybody, we pretty much have said this, but we are in the process, and the board is working on our superintendent search. It's all, you'll hear more about it as we move along, but we're in the very beginning stages. Even tonight, we're going to spend some time tonight talking about it in executive session, but do believe that we are on it, we know the clock is ticking, and we will absolutely get that done as we have on other things that we know we need to do. So, that's my report. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Any board committee reports?
I blew the wad on the OSBA thing.
I hear you. Any correspondences, announcements? Oh, go ahead, you can do it. Go ahead.
Oh, well, two, well, one thing that I meant to say with Mr. Shergalis was that